The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, amenable with liberty and justice for all.
Because there was a concern about the content of the minutes, I'd like to, um, do you have a motion to approve the minutes? And once we have a motion and a second, then we can, um, then I'll ask for errors and revisions. So that any changes that need to be made, be made, and those changes are subject to a vote according to Robert's rules. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda of November 9th.
Do I have a second? A second then? All in favor?
Oh. Do you have that in the discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, is there discussion of the consent agenda?
There is.
Particularly of the minutes?
So yeah, there's, um, a couple of things that, um, I asked Carly to include that were verbatim from the last, um, meeting. So on, in paragraph two of the town administrator's report, um, the last seconds, really on the top of the second page, Kathy had stated that she, um, would not be working with Parker Appraisal again.
So that was actually a note from our conversation. I reviewed the recording and Kathy didn't say that. Her comments were further down in the draft minutes that I sent where she was...
Losing faith.
Losing faith in that was what she said. So that was one, I say to include that.
Oh, so... I have Carly's...
I have the right line here.
Yeah, if this helps go over to Madeline and Kathy might like to copy as well.
Yes, okay.
So further on, so I think one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight paragraphs?
Okay, let's, um, let's deal with the changes one at a time.
So if this has been moved to another item, I can remove that comment. So on the eighth paragraph, the last two sentences in red, with Carly adding verbatim.
When you say verbatim, verbatim means that I...
Off of the recording.
It's a transcript.
Off of the recording.
It's not word for word I summarize, so it's not verbatim.
Okay, so...
I'm not sure where you are.
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure where you are.
Right here on the eighth paragraph on the second one.
Yes, okay.
Um, when we spoke about the disappointment, um, with Parker Appraisal and saying that the select board had been backed into a corner. But we had no choice to address the abatement application, I would like that included.
Could you move that please?
Do you want to do it one by one or does it hold?
Yes.
I prefer to do it one by one. I move that we amend the minutes to include municipal officer Lavalley spoke to her disappointment with Parker Appraisal. She stated that the select board has been backed into a corner and now has no choice but to address the abatement applications as reviewed by the contractor. Is there a second?
Awesome. Is there further discussion about that?
I have none?
None. Okay, um, then let's go. All in favor of the change?
The next change is at the bottom, that last paragraph on the same page. On that last sentence, it says, "Miss, Miss Pollan clarified that a separate application is required for the Board of Assessment Review should an application for abatement be denied, a taxpayer, and a taxpayer chooses to appeal the assessment further." Just clarifying process. So I move that we add in per Carly's summarization. That statement. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion?
I have none. None. All in favor of the change?
Two paragraphs later, the last sentence, um, it says because of this, Ms. Pollan, it actually needs to say asked Municipal Officer Andreessen to talk to, to talk with Mr. Engers directly. That was in her direction, not mine. I move that we add in because of this, comma, Ms. Pollan asked Municipal Officer Andreessen to talk with Mr. Engers directly.
Is there a second?
Second. Any further discussion?
I have none. All in favor?
Let's see. On the second last paragraph, under public comment, I had the addition add that to the sentence, it says, Planning Board submission and the Planning Board chair is all over allowed to meet with Co-De-force and often just to review applications. It's really to review applications for completeness, but not discussing applications.
Is that, um, is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Is there a second?
So we're not going to include that in this, in the summarization.
I don't.
It just, if it's a, it's a, if an applicant, I think it implied that they were discussing applications.
We need a second in order to discuss this according to Robert's rules, and I think we need to...
I can't second it because I don't agree with someone.
Okay, so that motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, and that, and the following paragraph, I stated Municipal Officer Andreessen stated that public comment is not always on the agenda prior to a meeting. I move that we add that to the paragraph.
Is there a second?
One second. Any further discussion?
I have none. All in favor?
And then, on the second paragraph on the last page, I stated Municipal Officer Andreessen asked Ms. Estabrock what information the chair is seeking. Municipal Officer Hennessy interrupted the conversation. Municipal Officer stated that Ms. Pollan had spoken and therefore Ms. Ms. Estabrock should be allowed to speak. I move that is added to the dialogue.
I would make the friendly amendment that we include, um, the inserted word in the next sentence, Municipal Officer Hennessy gavelled for an end to the discussion. It, that was part of the same conversation, so I think it's appropriate that those two be discussed at the same time.
I have no problem combining those two statements.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Is there further discussion?
There's none. I don't. I don't know why it's necessary to put that in there.
Because it was, I brought the topic, we, we were challenged for having something not on agenda, and then we permitted one of the parties to have their rebuttal and then silence the other party.
My concern is...
It's important to state that.
You got Municipal Officer Hennessy interrupted the conversation. There's been many times when this board has interrupted one another. And if we're going to start doing that, I just feel it's inappropriate and just a way for us to get further apart.
I just, if we're going to follow, um, our code of conduct, we need to allow both parties to speak or not let either party speak.
And Suzanne, you do a lot of that. Are we going to put in here every time you interrupt? I mean, I think we have to follow the rules of conduct, but I don't think we need to put this in here every time somebody interrupts one another, or that's all that's going to be in here, so.
I, I have no problem trying not to do that, but when we gavel someone and end their discussion, which is the first time I've seen that happen in the four years I've been here, I think that needs to be put into the documentation.
I have no problem with the gavel.
It's the first part.
Yes.
But, but we, we, the reason it was, I, my concern was that we allowed one of the parties to speak and then silenced the other. That's, has nothing to do with really the disruption, it's, um, being fair and just.
Who did we allow to speak?
Christine spoke, and then we did not let Ms. Estabrock speak.
Uh, Ms. S, Ms. Estabrock, as I recall the meeting, um, brought the subject up. Then Ms. Pollan clarified. I had already advised the meeting that that was not on the agenda, so it was not open for discussion. And I advised, um, Ms. Estabrock that it was appropriate for her to request that to be the topic, to be on an agenda. I was cautious that the topic was quite likely a personnel issue, and, um, when she continued, I thought it was broken. So let's, let's, um...
We didn't, we didn't let the other party speak.
Let's, let's vote on the first paragraph separately, if that's acceptable.
You asked to mar, marry them, I have no problem putting them together, makes sense to keep them that way.
I'd assume they'd be second, uh, separated. Okay, so according to Robert's rules, we have to, um...
We have a question.
It, it's tough back here to hear you speaking because of the van that runs in the kitchen. If you could speak up, that would be great. Thank you.
If the... They've been put together, so we need to vote on them, and then we need to vote again, then to, to separate them. So, um, all those in favor of the motion as it stands, which would put the two paragraphs together? Please signify by raising your right hand. All of those opposed?
So what's the purpose of separating after you asked to put them together?
Clarification. So now, then we've separated them, so now I'm going to call for a vote on the First Amendment, which is about the interruption. So could I have a motion to accept? And if we don't want to accept it after the second, then we can vote no. Is that clear?
Clear.
Okay. So could I have a motion on the first paragraph of, that, under discussion? The one, the paragraph beginning Municipal Officer Andreessen?
What, I'm sorry, what are you asking for?
I'm asking for a motion to accept or...
I, I motion that we accept the paragraph, um, which is Carly's summation, summarization of the dialogue at the meeting. As it is stated, I'm not sure why we can't put the material in there because it is summarized in the documentation.
There's no second, so that motion dies for lack of a second?
Just hide it then, I guess, okay?
So, um, I'd like a motion on, um, the other insertion that is under question?
I make a motion that we include Municipal Officer Hennessy gavelled for an end to the discussion.
And, um, is there a second? Is that a second?
Yep. I have discussion.
Is there? Okay.
I think we need to include the entire dialogue. I think putting this as it is, it's not being truthful and transparent to our community. I think we need to revisit that. So I, my motion is to go back to the initial for transparency to our community and to document what happened at that meeting. I think it's important that we includes both paragraphs in that information. Is there a second?
We want to go forward and put in every time somebody interrupts somebody, I can do that, but I'm not going to go back and do it.
I'll do that if you want to interrupt, I, absolutely, let's do it. We'll put that in there every time someone interrupts me, do that. That's what it takes to put this in transparent mode, I will do that.
Is there a second on that motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. Now, for Municipal Officer Hennessy gavelled for an end to the discussion. Is there a motion on the floor?
There is a motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there further discussion on that issue? All in favor?
So should we have another motion to approve the minutes as amended?
We should have another motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of November, is it none?
Yes.
As presented?
As amended.
As amended.
Is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? And, um...
Opposed?
Is, all opposed? So no. Approval of warrants? Shall we approve the warrants, the municipal and school expenditures?
I move the, accept the warrants as presented.
Seconded? Is there further discussion? Call for vote? All in favor? The upcoming select board meeting will be on Thursday, December 7th, 2023, and that meeting will be at the West Bath Town Hall.
I will not be present. I'll be in Phoenix.
I will not be available for an evening meeting on the 7th.
Could I have a motion for discussion of alternative dates?
I make a motion that we discuss the alternative dates and or times.
Is there a second?
A second then? Discussion? Possible days? I'm open the following week if that works for anyone. That work for you?
Um, I think it might be helpful to have this discussion when we're talking about Parker Appraisal. Coming to a workshop.
So I can call from the table and...
Yeah, I think that's probably...
Okay. On favorite table?
No, we're going to sign.
Oh, then we don't have a word. Okay, so we will just...
No, Kathy moved the table.
Oh, second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. This is item number one for the select board, the Cassella Waste Contract Renewal. We have that complaint. Comments, concerns?
So I guess my first question is, which I know has been on one of the topics, Kathy, how are they doing on noise?
The noise has been, they've done a great job. A great job. I have not seen nor heard any vehicles on my way to work. I have had no complaints from neighbors.
I think that they've done an excellent job with the stickers and helping enforce who can and can't participate in that strategy and ensuring that the residents of West Bath perceive that they're supposed to be getting a good job.
Is the, um, is, are we in the, um, current condition of being ready to, to submit this to MMA?
Um, yes, we are at the point, I wanted to see if there were other items that the board wanted to include or consider or ask questions about before I sent it to MMA, but they will be reviewing the insurance severability and condemnation portions of the contract to see if the language is appropriated today. And they have changed a little bit over the years. And then the fees will also need to be negotiated.
Okay. So essentially what we're, um, we need a motion to submit this as presented to MMA? Or are we going to have discussion at first?
Yeah, I think discussion would be helpful because they probably have some questions about how certain things will work. And we, we've asked for items that weren't in the contract right before.
Can I just ask what your name is?
Mark.
So I just want to say, Mark, um, we have had some neighbor complaints. Mark has talked to me about those, and every time there is a neighbor complaint, he has been right on it. I think that's important to acknowledge, and I want to thank you personally for that.
Thank you.
After we had that discussion, it seemed to calm down, and, um, people are very pleased that you took that seriously, so thank you.
West Bath resident too, so I do, I do take those complaints seriously.
I would like to have a motion before we open that up because, according to Robert's rules, before we, before we have discussion, we should have a motion. So I move that we, um, accept the proposed lease agreement as presented this evening.
Well, we have discussions that may alter that though.
We have, what we can do is if there are items to be added, we can add it, but before, according to Robert's rules, before we discuss this, we need to have a motion. And in view of the current, um, mood, I think that we need to be very careful to follow Robert's rules. So again, I move that we accept the proposal for presentation to the May Municipal Association for Review.
I, I'd like to amend that, I move that we accept the proposal as presented and open it for dialogue prior to presenting it for MMA. Which is what's going to happen when we vote on it. Is there a second?
On what?
Yeah, there's two motions on the floor.
So which one second? That, um, we can't present it to MMA without having edits made to it. I think we're prematurely sending it off to MMA, I think we're opening it for discussion in this group.
The process that I'm proposing is that we have a discussion that is acceptable under Robert's rules. We make amendments, and then the process would be to send this on to MMA as amended.
So why couldn't we be a motion to open this up for discussion?
So I can rescind and would rescind the, my, my motion? If you feel comfortable accepting this, second, the second? Suzanne's motion?
Suzanne's motion?
I move that we open for discussion, Cassella Waste Contract prior to submitting this draft to MMA.
My second. All in favor?
Okay. So questions, comments, input? So what are the, what are the edits that we've done to this year over year, or the contract over contract, we could say?
I mean, there's, there's many edits because just the way things are worded.
How do we?
And you, you looked at it in your past, at past meetings.
So what, I guess we'll look at you, and you, you know what these additions are, and you want to share your input on what we requested.
Yeah, sure, I guess I have, I do have one question in, in the...
I'm sorry, what?
Please identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm Chris McHale with Cassella Waste.
You've been here so often, I'm sure.
Yes, a number of times, yeah. So, so in the contract that we were sent as, took to review, there were what it seemed like suggested, um, new, new fees. Is that, was that what you guys had agreed on for, for new rates as far as, uh, you know, like the, the fee for, you know, the, the host community fee, uh, for trash recycling? There, there was a number entered in there, it was different than what's currently happening?
Yeah, we, we have not discussed numbers yet. The numbers are all up for negotiation.
Okay, yeah, we, I, I would say we interpreted that as a, um, a proposal of a fee adjustment. So that, that's kind of what I was going to talk about as far as the, the fee structure currently, uh, the, the MSW tonnage, host community fee.
Do you know what page that's on, so we can review that?
Uh, yes, sorry, summarize all my notes and...
Is it under payments and fees? Or general site access and use fee?
So it's really page five, is it, page five? I'll remember the pages.
Yes, exactly, so you'll see at the very top of page five, um, it says solid waste host fee of $3. But then they like X's out the numbers. That, that current rate today...
Wait, 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 I'm not seeing it.
That's the next page, you can...
Oh, okay. Okay, so I just, yeah. Oh, yep. Sorry about that, go ahead.
So at the very top, it says, uh, solid weigh, uh, solid host fee of $3. Currently today, that's, uh, that's a dollar sixty-five. And then we're on, on the lower section where it says a host fee of eighty cents for recycling, that is currently fifty cents today. And that's for every ton of that material we, we, we give to, to West Bath.
Where did these figures come from? Do we know, Christine, was this like from other towns or...
Um, it's basically just a bill or a few. So I, I was anticipating that all of these fees that we negotiated.
Okay. So what fees do you, if we're at $3 today in solid waste?
One, you know, you're at a dollar sixty.
A dollar sixty-five, is, is, what, where do you see that fee going for the next contract term?
Uh, we were making a suggestion of $2.50.
Instead of three?
Instead of three.
Okay.
I'd be open where this kind of, um, language in this contract leaves that rate flat for the, the contract. I, I would be open to at year four, in year seven, you know, the, the host fee increasing to $2.75 and then in year seven to $3 if, if that's, um...
The town attorney did suggest an escalator. If that's of interest to you, that's something we can explore.
And is it, this is a, what is the term of this contract?
This is ten years, uh, with a five-year option.
Okay, so, um, so you're saying years one to five, $2.50?
So this, this contract opens up the door for, um, uh, the, the rent, the lease agreement in years four and seven. I would say in year four and year seven, we increase the, the, um...
The fees matching the rental?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, how do you propose addressing, um, the five-year option then? After that?
I, I, I think we should put that as mutually agreeable, um, to, to...
At the time?
Parties, yeah, for, for fee, yeah. I believe we open that to a mutually agreeable extension with fees being negotiated at that point.
Okay. I'm fine with that, is it just, how do you guys feel?
All right, that makes good sense. It gives, uh, Cassella room to plan for five years, which seems important in a business, and gives us the opportunity, um, if we need to increase those prices, to do that after five years, so...
And how do you see the fee in recycling, the recyclables then?
I'm good with what's on there, the, the, the eighty cents, it's a, it's a much lower number because there's not a lot of weight with recycling, so it's, it's much, much less of an impact, um, you know, on the financial side for, for both parties, so, uh, the per ton, uh, so I'm fine with, with that number that was, was listed, eighty, going from fifty cents to eighty cents. We do about, um, it's mostly trash on the weight line, but it's about, um, 55,000 ton per year goes through there, so maybe if I say an increase on the trash, it's a little north of, you know, 10 grand, um, an additional, um, you know, revenue towards it.
Revenue's good for both of us.
Yeah.
So what, what was the next? So what was the next change?
So the only other things that we really, they put, it looks like, it looks like we've added in that we pay for the municipal trash containers, like at the municipal buildings, as for free, which is perfectly fine for us.
School, uh, school.
Yeah, I saw, I signed a bill today for the school for Casella, it'd be nice to have everything in one.
Who is the school?
I think it'd be cleaner to just have it covered in the contract.
Especially if they're gonna cover it for nothing.
We also wanted to, you know, have further discussion on, it opened up a community dump day for West Bath residents, once a year, to utilize the transfer station, I would assume on Saturday, where they could dump at no cost. Just wanted to further discussion on what that looks like to make sure nobody's taking advantage of that and someone tears down a...
Refrigerator?
decides to use it for the community dump day, which we've seen happen on some of those days, so just kind of wanted to talk through some parameters on that and what that would look like.
What would you suggest for the parameters to be included?
So I guess, again, we're a discussion, but, you know, we could open up on a Saturday. We'd probably use the, you know, the regular transfer station instead of the drop-off area. Would weigh people in and out, just so we can track tonnage. I assume some people are gonna come in with trailers, dump trailers, things like that. I would like to limit it to one dump per resident. You know, if people can get creative, what we do in Durham, where, you know, we'll see the same person drive ten times, it's like, well, even same enough for all year for this. But we didn't want to open it up, I mean, it's, we're open to doing it, we're all on board, just, you know, probably gotta discuss narrowing down how we manage that day.
So we just had a collaborative day, I just saw that bill come through also.
Hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste, that's, so I wonder if we should tie it to that timeframe also, so that we kind of get in the rhythm of hazardous waste when we get in, dump the next and try it. Say like spring.
That's a possibility. Some other communities actually are given a taxpayer list so that the taxpayers can decide when they wanna go and it can be any time during the year.
Yeah, a free dump per year.
Yeah, free dump day, and once they're checked off the list, that's it.
We'd be open to that as well, if they just, one time a year, they wanna utilize the transfer station and get a free dump.
Then they can clean out when they want.
If you didn't wanna do a dump day, that's...
Well, then you're not gonna have the backlog either of everyone coming at one time.
Yeah, I would open it up with an operator, a couple operators there, some extra helpers, you know, as we're weighing the material in, you can push the pile up, but that works too. So West Bath, is that Longton and Brunswick's household hazard waste day?
Yes.
It was.
That's, you said you got the bill there.
I saw the bill, I just saw it come through the morning, and that's what we think of, and it was, I think it was in October.
Yeah, we joined Brunswick in the fall in Bath and in the spring.
I was pretty sure, but one thing I wanted to steer away from during that free dump day, however we do it, is people bring in paint, unacceptable.
No hazardous waste, that's what I'm saying, if we tied it to, if we're gonna do it in one day, if you tied it to the hazardous waste goes on this day, and then the rest of the trash goes on this day, you've kind of then separated the potential.
Would you all consider doing a hazardous waste just for West Bath, or is that prohibitively expensive?
Uh, so there's, I think we're limited to the restrictions of our, what we can accept and not accept, I'm not sure, I'm not permitting there, but...
No, we can, we could host it, yeah, we could host it, we're permanent, we do it under our West Bath Transfer as well. Yeah, let me explore that, like, on the cost of what that would be, and certainly, I can give back to you on Casella, you know, being, you know, taking the bill on that one, I will, I can give back to you on that.
Sure.
It would spoil my fun because I've done Bath's recycle as the jump-off person for West Bath residents, it's a lot of fun. It's a good group of trash people, recyclers.
We do a lot of them, we always get pizza at the end of them, it's a fun day, it definitely is.
Celebration of the trash, yes, it's really quite lovely. So at this point, for negotiation, we have the price, the escalation of escalator clause, and recycling, and trash day.
The only other thing I wanted to mention about the contract, a couple, I said a couple more, sorry. The, there's no mention in the contract about the curbside collection recycling that we do twice a month, we should probably add that in.
Yes.
We're gonna do that at no charge, just wanted to get that put in there, so...
Yes. It's all due.
Yeah. Tomorrow, yeah. And then the other one was the lease amount.
Yes.
So we currently pay...
Okay, do you want, you want to get that? I think it says ten years, that's the amount.
Yeah, it's, it's a fine size, I don't know.
There is a mention about the collection of recyclables on page five. I don't know, maybe it's not enough, or...
Yeah, I think, yeah, it talks about it, similar to like the drop-off thing, the fee associated with the attendant that we charge, that's not in very clear language either, just, it will be a negotiated rate. I'd like to put that as more of a, you know, more strict language on that as far as like what the, you know, we're not looking to increase it at all, but just put that number in there, is what we're charging in the, for the...
Okay, if you could suggest some language and just send it to me, that would be really helpful.
So is this for items that they're bringing to drop off?
Yeah, so we charge the attendant that stands there on the drop-off days.
Tuesdays, Saturdays?
Yeah, there is a, there's a charge for that.
Of three dollars a bag, or, yeah.
No, 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 we charge West Bath, there's a, there's a charge to the town of a management fee of nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seven dollars per management fee that we charge every, every month for the attendant that manages the drop-off center.
Wow.
Yeah. That one, that's right in there since twenty years ago, I don't think we've moved that number in twenty years, but it was in the old contract and was in the one that was sent to us. It doesn't give the exact number, it just states that it would be a negotiated rate, I was gonna show you I'm not part of those negotiations on that rate, but...
So the fees are all on page five, actually, you've got the base fee. Yeah, that's, right, I'm trying to see that, so we're, that should probably all be in the same area for fees back there.
The lease, the lease amount is on page two...
I think it's page five.
Five, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's six dollars per year.
Yeah, sixty thousand dollars per year, which would be five thousand dollars per month. We currently are paying three thousand nine hundred. We're fine, I'm fine with the five thousand per month. I would just ask, we're also paying, paying two seventy-five a month for the salt shed, which from everything I have been able to pick up...
Yeah, we took the salt shed out of the contract.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking, is that two seventy-five part of the five thousand?
Yes.
I think the salt shed at one point, from everything, all the old documents I could read, was the recycle building that's up at the top, we, it used to be called the salt shed. I assume the town stored their salt there at one point, but I think that's what it's referencing, so that gets something in there, five thousand.
So that's no longer a separate...
Oh, perfect.
Community salt shed.
Yep. So yeah, so we're fine, fine with that. If there was anything else I really get?
Let me ask a question, if you're gonna pay us five and then we pay you money back, is there a reason to have that separated? For the, to have your...
For the tenant?
Oh, for the tenant.
I mean, is there a reason to have all the fees, one part over here that we're paying for the tenant, the other part over here you're paying us for the, I'm just curious if that was intentional?
No, it was unintentional on my part. So you're saying just...
But just put all the fees in one section of the contract, we'll say, here's your lease payment, here's what we pay you, the net money is X.
Yeah.
Just so that we see in one location what this actually is costing us.
Yeah, we should, a hundred percent, that's what we do in most of our contracts, we put a table in and say reference, you know, exhibit A, and then have all the fees in the...
Well, especially if we're gonna have a graduated scale, we should just put all of the financial components in one section of the contract.
Yeah, and then have the contract reference exhibit A to reference pricing, I think that's, that's how most, when we're done, this was just off the old one that was done a long time ago.
Let's fix it.
We can certainly do that.
Make it easier for everybody. So I presume the hours have not changed?
I tweaked them a little bit.
So what changed? I just wanna make sure that we're on, because I know that it's the early, there's two vehicles in the early morning hours.
And when I put these hours in, I have no idea what will work for you, it's just sort of a suggestion, a starting point for discussion.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same exact language for the old contract to what this is as far as two trucks leaving before six AM. We, obviously, we're not doing that at one point, and you know, Mark has adjusted the operation, and that has not been an issue for us to operate that way, so we don't foresee any issues with that.
Yes, we have two vehicles that have egress only.
There's a change to the vehicle access hours, it was four, and it's five now. Summer hours. And winter hours.
What was it?
It was four o'clock, and we changed it to five.
For access in.
Access in.
Receiving hours, summer six and winter six.
Right, yep, we don't receive any material between, you know, before six AM.
No, it's specific to the vehicle access hours, that's the only one that was tweaked.
Right.
So would that limit us from having the two trucks leave before...
No, 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 it's egress, we still have the two egress out, you have the two out, but nothing before, nothing else after that.
What was, what was tweaked, I'm sorry, I just wanna understand this completely. So, summer hours, I can still have two trucks leave?
At four.
At four, okay, yep, that's perfectly manageable.
And as a reach right now, in the winter as well.
Yep.
As long as they don't come in.
Right, yeah, they can't, yeah.
They can't leave and come back before five.
Before five.
Right, but they can go out.
Two can leave, and then nothing else happens until six.
Right. For everyone else, that's important to us because it's two front-load trucks and what they're doing is picking up trash in Brunswick and in downtown Bath, before the traffic gets really heavy, so it's really a safety thing. They're backing out off of Route One, you know, it's before traffic gets heavy, so that's why that's important. And they're super receptive coming down the road, you know, they have their marker lights on, you know, and they're putting it in neutral, so just eking out of there really quietly, so...
Are there other points that you wanted to bring up?
No, we were, we were fine with everything for the most part, just more clarification than anything. I can, I can, this is with our legal department right now, so I can have them make some of the adjustments that we talked about, can add the table, the pricing table in, that shows out all fees going both ways. That would make it easier, and we'll get that back to you guys shortly.
I had one other thing?
No, we've hit your limit.
I think Christine and I were talking that day, just stopped by the town hall, about the hours of the drop-off center. I know, I think Saturday, that's a good eight to two o'clock, that seems to be a good, you know, Saturday, everyone's usually, most of the people on the weekend off. Tuesdays, you had mentioned something about possibly extending those.
Yeah, we could extend the hours a bit.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that before we sign anything that that's talked about. Right now, it's three to five on Tuesdays, and you know, if it's two o'clock, if it's, it's usually a madhouse right at three o'clock, you know, everyone's there lined up, ready to go, so I just wanna prepare myself to happen, you know...
Well, I feel like we came in earlier, the congestion from B I W.
Yeah.
We could in and out before three thirty, in an ideal world.
So we're talking two o'clock, one thirty?
I'm just trying to find it in the contract.
Yeah, that's one of those not perfectly clearly stated in the contract.
It isn't, it's the Saturday hours.
Well, we can look at that actually for sure.
And do we wanna put in here, that, right now, I think we got the recycling, it says two days, we didn't say it's Tuesday, it doesn't say days.
First and third.
First and, first and third, but we, I don't think it says specifically, hold on. And do we, do we wanna stipulate that? It's on page five.
Yeah, so, yeah, I do.
It says at least twice a month, it just says twice a month, so do we wanna say it's the first and third Friday?
The reason why I left out the days is just so that we wouldn't be bound by those days in case you need to make a change at some point.
Yeah.
But we could, or we could put in there, or mutually agreed upon.
Yeah, something like that would be fine.
There's one, you know, nothing we need to talk about today, there's going to be a time probably in the next, like, five, seven years, that we're going to come to you and say we wanna deliver bins to everybody's house, and we'll pay for those. We're moving to a collection style that's automated, where there's an arm on the truck that picks, picks the bins up. We'll eventually get to a point where we wanna do that here as well, but we can, that's probably about five years away.
And then, let's see. Where do we have, so that's on the collection part, I don't know where the, where it says days of operation. And where's our tipping fee in here?
The host community fee that we pay is on, I think it's page five.
We just don't call it a tipping fee in here.
I'm just thinking, if everything's going up, our tipping fee should go up too.
Yeah.
The same, good for both of us.
The tipping fee on the...
The other people's trash you recycle.
At the drop-off?
Yes.
Yeah, we were gonna actually break that up into like, you know, the one dollar for the, yeah, we can...
One dollar wayback, three dollar block back, is that what you're talking about?
No, the revenue that we get in from...
That's the three.
Yeah, we have that going, we have it going from, from one sixty-five to two fifty, was what we said.
Yeah, it's just not called a tipping fee.
It's called the host fee. Yeah, it's commonly called the host community fee.
I mean, where's the page on our Tuesday, Saturday?
I don't see it.
I don't see it either. Do you see it in there?
I don't think it's in there.
No, it's not in there.
We can, we can add that in. And we're saying we wanna do what now, one, one to?
Two.
Two to five.
Two to five, is that a copula?
On Tuesdays.
Yeah, we extended it an hour.
Well, just, I think it, it works for everybody's interest, 'cause you, if you get it out before BIW, you have work day.
Yeah, yeah, it's just me, you know, yeah, having a labor in the yard at that time, which I think two o'clock is, I can manage that.
Chamber of signs.
I got a chamber sign, a brand new sign.
Um, but I, I don't see, if we can figure out.
I don't think that drop-off center hours are, are listed in here.
We should certainly put that in there, similar to the recycling day. So let me ask you a question, um, right now we have one dump day for the town, would you consider giving us two, 'cause we have two right now, where we collaborate with, um, the other towns, like the, the recycling.
The hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste.
Yes, hazardous waste, but, but if we, so, but I'm just saying, if we get into the habit of, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we, we, we could do that, uh, like a spring and a fall.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that way is, you know, and, 'cause, you know, most people are gonna do both, some might, and try and do it more, but I think it is, just if we mirror what we're doing with the hazardous waste, if you can get people into a mindset on that, if we're gonna.
Usually twice a year with different municipalities, yeah.
'Cause right now, and, and, you know, if we're going back, and I still think even if we go back to the, that hazardous waste, it, um, either it's a separate day or a separate location on the same day, you want, I just want people to kinda get in the mindset of, today's the paint, and next week is the garbage, or the, the recycling, or whatever, so they don't mix, which is your problem, we don't want them to try and show up with hazardous material the day they're not supposed to have it.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to be very, we'll be very diligent on probably checking driver's licenses, or, um, because we, it, as soon as people hear the tour, there's a free dump day, everybody in fifteen hours, yeah.
You have to have a sticker on it, you have to, you can't, if you don't have the West Side sticker.
Open demo, I think.
Adhere to your car.
Yeah, yeah, they were talking about, on a free dump day, people would be allowed to bring demolition in, which they're not currently on those, on those days, they have to legalize the Monday through Friday scale, so that the town gets the tipping fee.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, and that's why I think it's important that we do, like, we get one dump, like, you, you can, you can, you can't come back in seventeen times.
Yeah.
Um, where you're bringing in all your relatives from other, you know, surrounding towns, and, um, so, I would be open to two, two days like that, we'll probably do something like, like, eight to one, um, on a Saturday, two times a year, uh, we'll bring in a crew and, um, you know, it would, it'd go through the regular transfer station, but just nobody would pay.
And just to, to kinda replicate what we're doing now with hazardous waste.
Right.
And we're not open on Saturdays for anybody's besides the, the regular drop-off day, so it's not like you'd be interfering with any large truck traffic.
And, and, you know, if they don't have a sticker, adhere to their car.
Yeah.
Not showing it in the window, adhere to the car.
Yeah.
Then you can't get in.
Yep, no, I, I would, I would agree to that, and we, we can do that.
We're gonna think that, just off topic, but I'd love to, we touched, I saw also the, um, shredding, if we did almost every weekend where you had hazmat, that, and then a shredding for documents to the town, that we offer that to the community, I don't see us, you know, maybe.
Kinda out of your points, Suzanne, um, I think that if we were to do the household hazardous waste day at the transfer station, it would be on a Saturday, kinda, and so you, you know, you're not just gonna not bring your trash back, and so it would be that same day, but we'd make it clear, this is the spring hazardous day, this is the fall, just wanna make that clear.
Then we'll tag the last week of the month with medical waste, pills, clean out the house.
There you go, yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Is there further discussion?
What do we wanna do?
So I guess, how long do you think it would take for you to give us a second draft of this?
Do you think you could be ready for the, the December fourteen meeting?
Yes.
Does that work for you?
On here.
We'll get, we'll get it to you before that, and you want us to come on the, on the fourteenth, um, after you've had a chance to review it.
Yeah.
You know, big one, yeah.
We do that.
Are you pleased?
Yeah, I pretty much so.
Okay.
This is very important to our operation, and, you know, we're obviously off to a rocky start, uh, start, but a plan at one point with you guys, and Mark, since he's taken over as the site manager, has done a great job there, and, um, we're happy that, you know, we've, we've done a lot there, we, we just got done doing a bunch of paving work, um, we put a bunch, a bunch of signs up, we put a bunch, I think we put like seventy grand into the, uh, recycle building to fix up some of the stuff that your, you know, the insurance, uh, had, had brought up, and we're doing more and more work, work there to improve the facility and, and try to make it not look like a dump, so, uh, that, that's our goal, so.
Got some flowers.
Yeah.
So, discussion included?
Yeah. With, great, thanks, um, for the conversation, and see you back here on the fourth of December.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We'll get you that, we'll get you that, uh, the updated contract with the new language in there, um, as soon as possible.
Great, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If we have a town administrator.
Hey, we are expecting to have carpeting installed beginning tomorrow, it can take up to four days. Um, there's a possibility that when they lay the carpet in the front office, that we might need to close to the public, and I'm just checking to see if that's acceptable to perform, may not have much notice.
So I guess people could take their computers off.
Well, yeah, I mean, we will probably still be there doing things, um, but it's gonna be hard to serve the public when they're laying the carpet in that particular office, because everything will be moved.
Well, yeah, I guess if someone's trying to get their car registered or something, and they were planning on doing it that day, we'd close it on them, is there any way to?
Well, it's the middle of the month at a very slow time, 'cause next week is Thanksgiving, and we're gonna be closed Wednesday through Friday anyway. Um, I think it's a good time if we have to close, if we don't have to close, great, but I'm just suggesting that there's a possibility that we might have to for at least part of the day.
I was gonna say, this should be an eight-hour.
Yeah.
Issue, it might be a couple.
Yeah.
Right. It seems to me that that's reasonable, and, um, Carly put up, uh, put it out saying, for your information.
Yeah.
There may be some inconvenience on X, Y, Z day.
And windows are being installed on Tuesday also, so there's gonna be kind of a lot going on in the town office.
Well, I would just say, if you do have to close, just give them a time, especially if they were planning on doing something, then they can come back in two hours if they need to get a car registered or something, if someone's trying to drive away and they need it.
Needs must. Anything else?
Yes, we had a change order for Birch Point Road, um, one change order in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred dollars. It included shore stabilization area for twenty-five hundred dollars. Preparation for paved swale and realignment for twenty-five hundred dollars. Stone line ditching seventeen hundred dollars. And installing flush gravel shoulders for forty-five hundred dollars. And the final payment was adjusted from November third to November seventeenth, so they extended the deadline. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Is the project gonna be able to get that paid?
It was paid.
Yeah, I believe so, I haven't been down there, I would imagine that Steve might be doing it in sections, I'm not sure.
I thought I saw a bill on there for seventeen thousand.
There was, there was a bill in there.
They did that piece for that lady that came to our meeting, from, I can't remember, remember she came in it, from Birch Point to some point, just before you get to Phippsburg, she was concerned about, I know that.
Both were done, there was two, there was one on Campbell's Pond and one of her, I, 'cause we had a, we had a bill from, for that, so I thought they were, is it done, or is not done?
It's a project.
Yeah.
Um, Steve hasn't checked in with me, I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent done, but I just got this change ordered today, so, I will check in to see the status.
Well, we, 'cause we had, we paid two towns for, for hot tub.
Right, I saw that.
Anything further?
Question, second, I'm allowed, what was the reason for the change order?
Shore stabilization area was added, preparation for paved swale and realignment, stone line ditching, and installing flush gravel shoulders.
Right, I understand what it was for, the question is, why was the change order necessary, usually when something's bid out, and includes everything in the change orders for additional or unforeseen conditions?
This would have been unforeseen, it was suggested by the engineer, and approved by the road commissioner.
So they missed a spot when they did the design, is that what it is?
I would imagine that's what it was.
Which I'm not sure.
No, I'm not involved in it, the road commissioner is. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Um, suggestions of future agenda items?
I think we should have, well, I don't think it's under, under comments or not, um, so we've recently had two people resign from the planning board, so we're down to three people, which is the bare minimum for a quorum. So I think that it's important, um, and I brought this up a couple months ago, that maybe we have, probably in this facility, um, a, a, I'll call it a job fair of committees in this town, that opened it up for opportunities for our residents to get involved, um, in all of the strategies that we have here, whether it's the budget committee, planning board, anything else that we have on the horizon, um, you know, educating the community as to what is available and how they can get involved, I know we had an email from someone, who said she just moved here and wanted to get involved, so I think, um, in light of having a bare minimum for the planning board, we definitely need to find an opportunity to make sure the town can continue to move forward.
We can put that in the, um, agenda for sure. To consider, if you wanna call it a jo- job fair, I don't know what else to call it for that. A community involvement fair. Or something. Part of the discussion could be what we focus to. I think we got the, um, the select.
Where are we on the, um, the broadband track?
Yeah, you can just shout if you, if they're not looking up, see questions and hands up. Sorry, I was taking a note.
Along that line, the committees and boards, uh, maybe kind of listed on the website, what committees currently we have, in the openings we have, if you could sign up, uh, either future openings or a current opening, that'd be of interest.
When members sign.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
When members turn.
Oh, yes, understood, yep. Where, where are we on the broadband, when is that, up?
I don't know what you mean by.
The, the, um, our extended Comcast.
Oh, the cable contract?
Yes. That's coming up, isn't it?
I don't have, I think it's two thousand twenty-seven. I just sent it out recently because, um, Elliot asked for it, he thought it was next year, it is not, it's two thousand twenty-seven.
And I presume we'll also have other abattness on the next agenda too.
And do we wanna talk about the, um, workshop?
Yeah, that's under Board of Assessors.
Okay.
Are, are we done talking about future agenda? Then, um, we will go into the Board of Assessors, um, information, um, first, I think is for us to set a date for a workshop with Parker Appraisal?
Yes, I spoke with Bob on Tuesday morning, um, he said he was expecting to have a workshop with the board, so, um, that's definitely something he will do. He did say that he would prefer to have it in the morning, if at all possible, and that he will not answer questions directly from the taxpayers, that the format needs to be a workshop with the board, with the public in attendance, he understands that, I made sure that he understood that, um, the public can come and listen, but because this is his company's revaluation, and he expects to go before the Board of Assessors to defend his values and his methodology, he doesn't feel it's appropriate to speak with the taxpayers ahead of that.
If people have question, can he really accept questions in advance?
If, if people have questions, what I would suggest is that the Board of Assessors right away ask the community for their questions, receive those questions, and then the board decide which questions you're going to ask on behalf of the taxpayers. I think that's the cleanest way to take care of it.
Without getting, um, into potential conflict.
Right.
Um, can we put that up on the website, um, for, well, why is he trying to do the workshop?
Well, that's what we need to talk about, I wanna give him a couple of dates.
Yep.
Um, I didn't realize you were gonna be gone on the seventh, so that's good to know.
I'm done that whole week.
So you're gone all of that week.
I fly out on the first and come back on the eighth.
What I would suggest is that we could have it as early as Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, and then as early in the morning as you're willing to do it, if you can all be available.
I can make that work, anytime that day.
Can you do that?
It's a Thursday.
Thursday?
No.
Wednesday, it's a Wednesday.
Would that work for you?
What time would you?
Anytime, right now, open.
Nine o'clock work?
Whatever works, I mean, I'm open all day, so whatever works for ten.
Sorry, didn't hear that, nine.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah.
That would have been travel time.
Okay, I'll see if that works for him, and then.
So Carly, can you post then as soon as possible?
I will, I told Bob I would call him tomorrow and give him the date, so if for some reason he can't do that, I think Suzanne really needs to be at the meeting, I think all three of you need to be at the meeting.
I can do the thirtieth, but I fly out at six AM.
Yeah, the thirtieth and the first, I will not be available, but the twenty-eighth is a possibility, if that works for you.
I can do that.
It's a little bit tougher, but uncontrollable.
I'm actually open that whole last week until the first.
So we have the twentieth and twenty-ninth as possibilities for the preference for the twenty-nines?
Yeah.
For the twenty-eighth, I'll just use as much week time as I can get.
Okay.
Is the twenty-seventh better for you? Is the twenty-seventh better for you, that Monday?
That might be a little tricky for the office, but.
We can do here.
Yeah, we can make.
Windows done.
We can make that work if we need to.
Twenty-seventh would be better, twenty-eighth is hard.
So why don't you say the twenty-seventh or the twenty-ninth then?
And we'll go with whichever he can be here. Okay. Any more discussion about that? So we have Board of Assessors business item two, possible reconsideration of certificates of abatement. I think we need motions on each one of those.
Are you comfortable taking them up before the meeting?
I'm not.
You do not need to.
Then maybe we'll need to postpone discussion.
Yeah, either that or. Yeah, that will work. Or a motion to not take from the table, since they were tabled.
I move that we extend the table of the abatements for Ann Ireland, Lloyd Johnson, Patrick Nelson, Dean Roll, and Daniel Willett, Revocable Trust, until after we complete the workshop with Parker Appraisal. Understood?
I see. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, moving on to somewhat more comments and announcements. Anything?
None.
But none? And public comment?
Anything you want to do? Doors.
Cutting out the noise.
The gate?
No, I'll keep calling them. Unless you have ideas of who else I could call that might be more available.
Has this certain company agreed to do this?
No, I'm having trouble getting them to call me back.
Better to call.
PDQ. Maybe just stop in there and see if they wanna do it. If not, let's find somebody else to do it.
I'd say they're usually pretty recent.
Because we have the money set aside for the.
Right.
After funds.
How much do we have left in our book?
I have to come back with a figure. I don't wanna top off the top of my head tonight.
Okay. Any further public comment? Steve?
I have a question concerning how things are going to proceed now without a resident part-time assessing agent. In particular, one problem I see, and I pose this as a question is how the town is going to manage it, is there are, as I believe one of, at least the assessment reviews involves, there are farmland and tree growth situations where taxes are essentially postponed until a final sale. And then taxes that would have been due are clawed back. And this can go on for decades, many decades. And the amount of money that's involved that could be captured can be huge, many tens of thousands of dollars. The only way that has been caught in the past that I have heard about is the local assessing agent with local knowledge and being aware of every sale and looking at every sale, notices that and then says, oh, by the way, it's been in farmland, a hundred thousand dollars of taxes over the past twenty years have been postponed. It's time to pay up. How is the town going to deal with that situation now that we do not have a local assessing agent?
Is that added to the card? Does that show up on the property card or can it be?
Yeah, we have records of all that.
But can it, can it show up as a line item or obligation on that card that, as of this date, this is the, each year we calculate what's owed on the property card?
I think that.
I'm not sure that it's on the property card. I would suggest that when you have your workshop with Bob, these are the kind of questions that he can answer and probably provide very useful information to you. I made a recommendation at one point that we go to a contracted assessing company. Because I understand, and many other communities in the state of Maine understand, that there is no barrel of available assessing agents that will work for a town, be employed by a town for eight hours a week. That barrel does not exist.
Could we try and post it and see if anyone wanted it though?
I would, I would suggest, and this is just from my experience, it's my opinion, that no other assessing company is going to wanna come in on top of someone else's revaluation and work off of that. The intention was to move forward with Parker Appraisal, who is very capable, and they serve a lot of other communities. The misinformation that has been put out at meetings has not been helpful to our process. It hasn't been helpful to daily operations. And it's been misleading the community about this company's ability to do their work. I would suggest that before we discuss this any further, that you have a conversation with Parker Appraisal and you determine how it would be best for the community to move forward. But until such time, I do not want any more misinformation put out into the community.
And this, this item is not an agenda item and I think there's been enough discussion on this.
So how about we amend the future agenda items to include a discussion about this? So that.
That's gonna happen at the workshop, I hope.
Well, but I, well, potentially, if I'm not, I'm not all in on Parker Appraisal. I think Kathy's on the fence on that as well.
Well, that, I have to say Suzanne, that is because of the information that you've been providing to the board that has not been accurate.
What has been accurate?
You said.
And this is not an item on the agenda, so this discussion needs to end. Don't make me pick up my gavel. Don't threaten.
Both from both ways.
As an additional comment, let me just add that, as I said, in any of these instances, there can be tens of thousands of dollars.
Absolutely.
Involved, and that would pay if we could find anyone to do the job, probably for their efforts.
We've allocated twenty thousand dollars for it.
So my concern would be, what if our assessor, say, had passed away? We would still be in the same predicament. So it's a much bigger picture, I think we need to address. How are we going forward? If, you know, you died tomorrow and you were the assessor, how would we be able to pick that up and keep going? Isn't that the bigger thing that we're missing? And.
Yes, we're a full test, it's only a code. The list of people available to serve as contract assessors is randomly revealed on the regular services website.
I actually mentioned that today, I took the assessor class.
There are two lists, one list is people who are without, one is included through contract services. That's the informal source.
Can we put this, simply put this on a future agenda as a future agenda item so that we are not violating the rule and the custom, that if it is not on the agenda, it's not discussed? So, and.
So let's add it to the agenda on the fourteenth, because that'll be after our workshop.
Excellent idea. It may not be resolvable at, on the, on that date because developing a long-term plan for record-keeping is maybe not something we can do in one meeting. But a start is important. We, we have had issues in the past about records not being available. So it's a very important point, but not up for discussion today. Is there further public comment? What do you?
June, simple question. How many abatements have been received?
How many abatements have been received?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? If there's no other public comment, we have a motion to go into executive succession? Could somebody make that motion, please?
I move that we go into executive succession pursuant to one MRS Chapter thirteen, Section four oh five, six A to discuss the personnel matters. Please put your chairs back before you leave.
Give anyone a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry? There's a little scam in the back.